Councilmember Priscilla Tyson, I'm Chair of the Finance Committee for the Columbus City Council. And I'd like to thank you for joining us for the discussion of the 2013 Capital Improvements Budget. I would like to recognize my councilmembers who are joining us this evening. Councilmember Herschel Craig, Councilmember and President Pro Tem A. Troy Miller, and Councilmember Eileen Paley. And also, we have John Oswalt, who is here representing Councilwoman Klein's office. And sometimes, some of you may be asking, what is the capital budget? Well, the capital budget, the capital improvements budget represents the city's strategic obligation to maintain and improve its roads, bridges, sewers, parks, buildings, and other critical infrastructure. The investments are community-focused and symbolize the city's commitment to improving the business climate and maintaining an exceptional quality of life. The proposed $374.9 million proposal that we will learn about this evening is really as simple as this. It helps with jobs, focuses on jobs, safety, and neighborhoods. We will receive an overview from the Finance Director, Paul Rakowski, followed by a presentation from each of the city department's directors to highlight their priorities in their proposed budget. And then, we will hear from the residents and organizations that can be impacted by this budget. Before we begin, I want to thank each of the departments, the mayor and his team, for the spirit of cooperation that has carried us to this point. And with that, Director Rakowski, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Chair Tyson and members of council. I will keep my comments brief, as I know we're here to hear the public's testimony on the capital budget. And you did such a wonderful job, as always, introducing the capital budget. I do want to thank both Rob Newman and Kyle Sever of my Debt Management Office, because they put in a ton of work, obviously, putting this document together and putting all the requests together and really working year-round on our capital program, not only the budget, but then all of the bond sales that we use to fill the coffers and fill the projects so that we can do all of these wonderful things. As you mentioned, the capital budget is what we use to purchase, build, and renovate many of those capital and important assets in our community, whether it be a heavy fire apparatus or a health center, or a police substation, or a firehouse. And though it isn't, you sometimes get the kind of attention that the operating budget does, it is equally, if not more important, because if we didn't have all of those assets out in the community, we wouldn't be able to adequately deliver services to the citizens. I do want to say that this 2013 CIB continues to reflect the priorities as approved by the voters in the 2008 voted bond package. For the citizens out in the audience, there is two components to the capital budget. We have what we call the new funding, and that's the new funding amount that we're proposing based on the ability of the various funding sources to support new debt. And then, we also have carryover funding, which is funding that remains from the previous year that we then carry over and add to the budget to get to our grand total. In the current 2013 CIB, we have $374.9 million in new funding, as well as $348.4 million in carryover funding. So when we look at all funds and all sources of funding, we have a total capital improvement budget for 2013 of $723.4 million. The SIT-supported funding, and that's that funding that comes from the quarter set-aside. I'll explain briefly the other sources of funds that we use to service the debt, but that general obligation debt that's supported by the income tax set-aside. That funding, total funding, is $358.6 million. The new SIT-supported funding is $248.5 million. And there is, if you were to do the math there, there's about $110 million in carryover funding that we're bringing in from last year to this year's capital improvement budget. I will say that that does not include, those numbers do not include, council's allocation of money that you're currently working on prioritizing to add to that capital budget. So, the overall total will increase by the amount that is added by city council with their amendment process. The balance of the capital improvement budget, as I said earlier, is Internal Service, Enterprise supported debt, also Water Pollution Control Loan Fund and Ohio Water Development Authority debt, as well as funds from Ohio Department of Transportation and federal funds. All of those are combined to support the overall capital budget. Just for comparison purposes, the Internal Service-supported debt in this budget, and this includes the carryover, is $17 million. The enterprise debt is $328 million. There's $34 million of that new funding for our enterprise debt, that is the Water Pollution Control Loan Fund and Ohio Water Development Authority debt. And then, the ODOT and the federal funds are really a very small portion of $2.37 million. The CIB also includes three other sources of funding for capital projects. These are all carryover funds, and they're tied to the sale of capital assets. So we have our General Permanent Improvement Fund dollars of $3.1 million, our Recreation and Park General Permanent Improvement Fund dollars of $3.5, and then the Streets and Highways Carryover of $3.3 million. So all of those sources together make up that 2013 capital improvement budget of $723.4 million. I'll speak briefly about some of the highlights of the finance and management projects that are included in this budget. I'll also briefly mention a couple of carryover projects from last year, because, as you know, we go through the design, but we're going to be starting what I believe are some very exciting projects that were budgeted in 2012 that we'll carry over that funding for into 2013 and get started with that construction. But in the new funding, we're going to begin to take care of our City Hall, which has really been neglected for a long time. So we're going to start a $10 million heating and cooling renovation of all the equipment here at City Hall. The design has been on hold a little bit. We're nearly completed with the design. It had been funded earlier, but we've been sitting on that for a couple of years, because it is one of those projects, we wanted to wait until our new building, the renovation of the 77 North Front was completed, because there's been a lot of disruption for everyone here in the campus. Unfortunately, when we go to replace all of these disparate heating and cooling systems here in City Hall, some of which, when you look out into our atrium, you can see them on the roof of the atrium, it will be a little bit disruptive, so we wanted to wait until we began that project. But we have $10 million in to replace that aging system, and then we'll have a much higher efficiency system. And then, as we all know, that some offices can be over 80 degrees and others are at freezing, we should be able to mitigate those problems that we have currently in the system. As we all remember, we did purchase a warehouse across from our current fleet facility on Groves Road. We have $11 million in to begin the improvements to that warehouse. We're currently looking at various city functions that we'll be able to consolidate into that facility and address some of the outstanding needs that we've had for quite a while. We'll be moving the truck operation for the refuse collection division from Alum Creek to that site, to operate out of that site, also to allow it to fuel at our CNG station that's right across the street. Licensing weights and measures from the Safety Department will also be located there. The fire warehouse, which is a facility we currently lease, will be relocated into a city-owned facility. The police dive team, computer storage for our Technology Department, so that we can ensure that there's secure storage for our computers before those discs are wiped clean and we salvage those computers. And finally, the Marion Road outpost for our Service Department. All of those functions, we're looking at consolidating in this warehouse. We also have money in for the Reeb school to work with our partners in the south side to repurpose that school for much better uses and currently sitting empty. So to deliver much-needed social services, educational other functions, we have $5 million in, that's our contribution, to the $8.5 million total. $3.5 million of that coming from our private partners down in the south side. We have $9 million in for the McKinley Avenue facility to construct on the property that we recently purchased that allowed us to relocate the city's central outpost for our Service Department, where all the plows and street sweepers and all that equipment, and the salt barn that's located currently on Nationwide Boulevard that we use to service the whole downtown area. We will be relocating that to McKinley Avenue, as well as our Facilities Management Division and the Environmental Blight Abatement Unit that's working out of that location as well. We have a safety-energy-efficiency project budgeted that we're excited about. This is going to save significant dollars in regard to utility savings by putting energy-efficient lighting in our police substations, as well as do some change out of equipment down at the Fire Training Academy. If you remember, we used stimulus dollars that we were lucky enough to get to do all of the fire stations. Now, we'll be able to do the police substations. And then, finally, a couple of projects that you'll notice that we're going to be continuing from 2012. As you know, we purchased the garage on Front Street. We'll be doing Phase Two of those renovations, which will deal with a lot of mechanical improvements and lighting improvements, to put in high-efficiency lighting and increase the security of the garage. We will be replacing the historic windows here at City Hall with a modern, fuel-efficient, energy-efficient, I should say, package of windows in the first two floors of City Hall. That'll be happening this year. We continue our renovations down at the Municipal Court Building. We now have a master plan to guide us, so we're going to begin Phase One of those renovations on the exterior and in the first floor of that building. We will be sealing, as we know from Monday night's council meeting, the resealing, the envelope for the Central Safety Building, the current Central Safety Building. We're excited about that. Again, that's one of our highest energy users as buildings go. It's very inefficient. This is going to maximize the efficiency of that building in regard to energy usage. And then, really, a big project for not only this year, but next year, is the demolition of the current 109 building that's beyond its useful life and the design of a new building to complete the campus. And so, both of those will be going on this year. And then, at this time next year, we'll be talking about funding the construction of the new facility that will replace that aging and outdated facility that we currently have. And with that, I'll stop my comments and answer any questions, or turn it over to the other directors and their representatives.
Thank you, Director McKnight. Are there any questions for Director McKnight? Why do I keep calling you Director McKnight? I'm looking at Director McKnight.
I'm convinced it's our wavy hair that I brought up the other night, that we share such a mane of flowing locks, that it's hard to tell us apart.
I'm so sorry, Director Rakowski, and thank you for your work. No, we'll just keep moving. I am so sorry. Maybe it's because I certainly care a lot about Director McKnight's area recreation and parks. But certainly, Paul, I certainly know that the fine work that you and Kyle and you said to Rob and your whole team have done with this budget have been exceptional, so thank you so very much. And our next committee will be the Development Committee, which tonight, we have in the chair our special projects coordinator, Hannah Jones, and we're happy to see you again in the chair.
Thank you very much, Chairwoman Tyson, members of council. In 2013, the Department of Development will continue its work to improve the commercial corridors of our city, revitalize our neighborhoods, and promote economic development. In the Economic Development Fund, significant streetscape and infrastructure improvements are underway at the sites, including American Edition, the former shot-in-scene site, and Columbus Coated Fabrics. The Green Columbus Fund will also continue to provide grants in an effort to further promote the redevelopment of brownfield sites. In housing preservation, we will continue our focus on both the renovation and rehabilitation of vacant homes and lots, as well as providing needed repairs to stabilize currently occupied homes by providing ongoing support for programs such as Home Safe and Sound and our Roof Repair Program. We will also continue our commitment to our homeless population by providing funding for much-needed shelter repairs. Within the Land Revitalization Fund, the focus will continue to be the implementation of the Mayor's Vacant and Abandoned Properties Initiative, with the goal to demolish an estimated 150 structures. The allocation of urban infrastructure recovery funds will be combined with the 2012 allocation in order to fund the list of 44 projects in 25 neighborhoods which council supported and passed at our last meeting. These projects continue our commitment to provide ongoing improvement to the neighborhoods of Columbus. The Neighborhood Commercial Revitalization Fund will continue to provide streetscape improvements, sidewalks, and other enhancements to our commercial corridors. These improvements not only enhance the walkability of an area, but attract and retain businesses within these vital centers of economic development for our community. These are just a few of the highlights of the work Development is undertaking in its effort to make Columbus a continuing success story. Thank you for the opportunity to present our work, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. And first of all, I want to say thank you for having a presentation for us and to showcase the work of the Development Department. Any questions for Ms. Jones? Thank you. The next person who will be speaking, Republic Safety and Deputy Director, Dan Gia Gardella. Is that right?
Councilmember Tyson, members of council, thank you for allowing us to come before you this evening to talk about Public Safety's capital budget. Obviously, we want to thank the mayor and Finance for working with us on this budget, and we think this funds several of our major priorities for 2013. The Public Safety budget proposes about $32 million in new funding, and broken down sort of in these major areas. The first one being fire apparatus, proposes $6 million in new funding. With this funding, we will likely purchase one ladder, five engines, and nine medics. And this investment continues really the momentum that we've had over the past five years, the past five capital budgets, that has allowed us to invest about $29 million in fire apparatus, which accounts for about 73 vehicles, which in terms of frontline vehicles, represents about 85% of our frontline fire apparatus. So we're very appreciative of the funding that we have been able to get. It's accounted for about 40 new medics, 18 engines, seven ladders, five heavy rescues, and two rescue support units, just in the last five years. And besides helping us to provide service to the community, these new vehicles also help us to reduce vehicle maintenance cost as well. The next area we'd like to highlight is our Neighborhood Safety Camera Program. We'll have, with new funding and existing funding, about a $2 million program that we'll be able to move forward. This will build on the foundation of the five neighborhoods that were implemented back in 2011. Safety cameras are succeeding in identifying criminal activity, such as drug dealing, prostitution, and loitering, and they have certainly helped police nab several suspects conducting more dangerous criminal activity. With respect to buildings and facilities, there is also $7 million for a fire station proposed in this capital budget. That station would replace Station Two at 150 East Fulton Street. The station is designed to be placed at the Green Lawn Avenue property, which, of course, over the last several years, the city has been moving off of that area and has now since demolished the buildings that were there making way for this fire station. We chose Station Two due to the age of that building, the number of firefighters and equipment that currently work out of that area, such as the bomb units, the heavy rescue vehicles, as well as we have two companies on fire engines, a ladder and a medic. So, this station primarily services the southern part of downtown, as well as parts of German Village, and we will be able to amply, continue to service that area by placing this fire station at the Green Lawn location. Other monies for fire facility renovations, about $1.5 million. Again, while there's been considerable investment in our new stations, there remains a significant need to upgrade parking lots, some security systems, kitchens, HVAC systems, and just general maintenance improvements at our 31 other fire stations. With respect to communications equipment, we're proposing about $230,000 in new funding for radios, portable radios for police and fire. This will give us about 50 portable radios to replace some aging units. And as you are aware, these communication devices are lifesaving equipment for our officers and firefighters, who rely on them every day in their emergency situations for communications and the performance of their duties. With respect to police renovations, we'll have about $1.7 million in general renovation dollars. And again, we have a number of projects that are in design or planned for police facilities, including some HVAC improvements at the McKinley Avenue complex, carpeting replacement for several of our buildings, as well as parking lot ceiling, gate and fencing repairs that we need at our various substations. The largest component of our capital budget as proposed for 2013 involves the renovation of our crime lab, the police crime lab, for about $14.5 million. The current crime lab, 6,500-square-foot facility, is currently at King Avenue, near the Ohio State University campus, which is co-located along with the Franklin County Coroner's Office. We have certainly outgrown that facility. Our crime lab conducts about 14,000 requests annually for service, and we will co-locate the crime lab with our police property room, which is currently at Woodrow Avenue. The crime lab will house a state-of-the-art DNA lab, a darkroom, alcohol toxicology lab, drug analysis lab, firearms testing, evidence control room, and of course, office space. These new technologies, as well as the new space, will be able to expand our firearms identification, enable more illegal firearms to be taken off the streets. It will also assist crime scene investigators with evidence collection and preservation of evidence, will allow the hiring of additional forensic scientists to test evidence, and perhaps most important, it will reduce any potential chain of custody issues, which is critical when dealing with sensitive evidence, since the crime lab, as I mentioned, will be co-located with the recently renovated property room. The design of the crime lab, which was funded in the 2012 CIB, is complete, is currently in plan review. And if funding is approved as part of this budget, we will bid for that renovation as quickly as we can, and the renovation could begin this year with about a year time for renovation, so we could move into that facility sometime towards the third quarter, perhaps, of next year. Finally, with respect to funding, we're requesting $350,000 for defibrillators for Division of Fire, for EMS response. Obviously, these are also important lifesaving instruments, and with this money, we'll be able to purchase about 15 of those defibrillators. I thank you for your time, and I'm available to answer any questions that council might have with respect to the Public Safety capital budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from anyone? All right. Thank you. The next person to speak will be Recreation and Parks, no, Public Service, I'm sorry. Public Service will be speaking, and as Deputy Director, Steve Wenzel. Good evening.
Chair Tyson, members of council, thank you for this opportunity to speak briefly about the Department of Public Services' proposed 2013 capital budget. Our proposed 2013 capital budget amounts to $87 million in new funding, and will invest in roadways, sidewalks, bikeways, and bridges, as well as other projects that will improve the quality of life in our neighborhoods, making them safer for motorists, pedestrians, and bicyclists. The centerpiece of Public Service's capital budget is $32 million in resurfacing. That's going to resurface more than 100 streets all over Columbus, more than we've ever invested in the surfacing program in a single year. Of that $32 million, $25.2 million will resurface more than 145 lane miles of streets. $3.8 million will be used for urban paving projects on major city arterial roadways. This is done in conjunction and cooperation with the Ohio Department of Transportation. $1.5 million will improve approximately 30 miles of valleys, and another $1.5 will be used for preventive surface treatments. This will be another busy year for street resurfacing. When you combine all street alley resurfacing projects from 2010, 2011, 2012, and what is scheduled for this year, we will have invested more than $110 million to maintain our streets. That amounts to more than 450 streets or 674 lane miles resurfaced in four years. To put that in perspective, more than all the lane miles of all the streets in either the city of Dublin or the city of Westerville. To put it another way, it's more than all the lane miles of all the streets in the cities of Reynoldsburg, Worthington, and Gehanna combined. A sample of some of the streets that we will be resurfacing is Freiburg Avenue between Lockborn Road and Fairwood Avenue, Champion Avenue between Leonard Avenue and Cole Street, High Street between Nationwide Boulevard and Fulton Street, and Minnesota Avenue between McGuffey Road and Cleveland Avenue. There will be other roadway projects also, including the rehab of Carl Road from State Route 161 to Schrock Road, in the amount of $4.9 million. Improvements in this project will include new pavement, curbs, sidewalks, lighting, and new traffic signals. Another project will be roadway improvements to realign Stigler Road from Windler Road to Gehanna Corporation Limits in an amount of $1.1 million. Additionally, this capital budget proposal will provide roadway improvements on Twin Rivers Drive from the Post Office to Goodell Boulevard in an amount of $1.2 million. Also this year, to make neighborhoods safer for pedestrians and bicyclists, we propose to invest in more than $7.3 million for nearly eight miles of sidewalks and other pedestrian safety improvements, along with $2 million in bikeways, bike lanes, bicycle pavement markings, and other signage. A few examples of where we'll build sidewalks will be on Joyce Avenue between Agler Road and Dunneun Avenue, Lockborn Road between Freiburg and State Route 104, and Marion Road between Persons Avenue and Lockborn Road. Some examples of bikeways for our 2013 capital budget include an Oak Street Bicycle Boulevard between Grant Avenue and Sherman Avenue, a shared-use path on Henderson Road between Kenny Road and Reed Road, and Front Street Sheros, which is shared lane markings between Green Lawn Avenue and Mound Street. For a second straight year in 2013, the city will have a curb repair program. For several years before 2012, the city didn't have any curb money. This year, $1 million we have proposed for this program will continue to address a backlog of requests to repair curbs that are in the greatest need of repair. Finally, Public Service will continue to be vigilant in maintaining bridges in the city of Columbus. The Department of Public Service is responsible for maintaining and improving, as needed, 223 bridges owned by the city. In an additional 118 bridges, we provide routine maintenance for the Ohio Department of Transportation. In our 2013 capital budget, we propose investing $4.5 million to improve city-owned bridges. A few examples of the bridges are rehabilitation of Campus View Boulevard Bridge. It's a bridge that goes over Conrail Railroad, tracks east of High Street. A rehabilitation of a bridge over North Broadway, west of Interstate 71. And rehabilitation of two bridges over Crook Road, west of 71. With that, I again thank you, and I will take any questions at this time.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. All right. Recreation and Parks, Director McKnight.
Good evening, Chair Tyson, members of council. We appreciate this opportunity to discuss our 2013 capital improvement budget. We're excited about the opportunity it provides to address the many needs throughout our parks and facilities. To look at some of the significant projects we'll be working on in the area of facilities, we have about $18 million in the capital budget. One of the priorities is to continue our efforts to add air conditioning to our recreation centers. We've completed work now at Far East, Barnett, Woodward, and the Franklin Park Adventure Center. This summer, we'll begin work on the Tuttle and Thompson Recreation Centers and adding air conditioning there. there. We're also working on major renovations to several of our centers. Milo Grogan is undergoing significant renovation now with the addition of a gymnasium, and we include air conditioning when we do that project. That will be completed in July of this year, and Westgate Recreation Center will begin a major renovation in June of this year, including an addition, but will also include air conditioning of that facility. We're also continuing to work on the athletic complexes. We've completed McDonald-Mock Road Facility, the Willis Facility is under construction now, and Big Run Athletic Complex will be the next one, and will start later this year. In the area of aquatics, we will be wrapping up construction on Blackburn and Indian Mound Spray Grounds this spring and have those open. But the big project for 2013 is the Maryland Park Pool. At the end of the 2013 swim season, we will close that pool, demolish that structure, and build a new pool there, very similar to the Dodge Park Pool that was opened up this past year. And we think that's going to be a great addition to that community. In the area of park and playground improvements, we have about $8.5 million budgeted. This year, you'll see improvements to parks, including Southeast Lions Park, Lincoln Park, Cook, Woodbridge Green, Kenlon, Hanford Village, Clinton Como, Martin, and Cedar Run Parks. We're also continuing our efforts to resurface parking lots, tennis courts, basketball courts, so there'll be a lot of that type of work this year. And we continue to upgrade our playgrounds on an annual basis. The other thing that we're doing with some of these funds is to continue our efforts in dealing with the Emerald Ash Bore and the impact on the ash trees. We are unfortunately continuing to have to remove ash trees throughout the city, but another component of that that we're moving forward with, as well, is to replant trees in many of the communities that have been affected by the impact of the ash bore. Greenways and trails, we have about $12.2 million budgeted, and we're getting nearing completion on a couple of key segments of that trail system. This year, we will begin construction on the last two segments of the Alum Creek Trail. Once those are complete next year, the Alum Creek Trail will be complete from Three Creeks Park on the south, all the way up to the Westerville Trail System on the north. And this is a key link as well in the Ohio-to-Airi Trail. The Sciota Trail from roughly I-670 north to Fifth Avenue is under construction now, and we'll also begin work this year on the Goodell Bikeway Connector, which will connect portions of the Olin-Tangie Trail west towards Brewer's Yard and Grandview. The other exciting trail project that we're working on is the Camp Chase Trail. We're in preliminary engineering now. This is the trail that runs roughly from McKinley Avenue west to 270, along the Camp Chase Railroad. We'll begin the first segment of that trail project later this year, and that'll tie into the trail work that the Franklin County Metro Parks is doing along the same corridor, continuing further west, and again, is another key link of the Ohio-to-Airi Trail. I also just want to mention on the Sciota Greenway Project downtown, we've made a $14 million commitment through our department to that Sciota Greenway Project. The first payment is made this year of that, and there'll be an additional $10 million over the next two years towards that exciting project downtown, where we take out the dam and add about 30, 35 acres of parkland in the downtown area. We also have funding in the budget to provide support to various community partners. The Franklin Park Conservatory, the Columbus Museum, and COSIUM are among those, and we'll continue to work and support those organizations. Those are some highlights of the projects. Again, we're very excited about it, and the capital budget, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Director McKnight? No? Thank you, Director. The next director is Director Technology, Director Gary Cabin.
Chairwoman Tyson, members of council, thank you for the opportunity to come before you and discuss our 2013 capital budget. Our capital budget this year totals approximately $9.5 million, and it has initiatives such as the data center facility. We have our equipment upgrade, routing equipment, and asset management. But the majority of these funds will be spent to continue to build out our fiber network. I know you heard me speak about this on many occasions, and I want to thank you for all your support throughout the years on this effort. We currently own over 300 miles of fiber, and as of probably the end of next year, working with Public Service, it'll go up to another 100 miles, so it'll be about 400 miles of fiber. Why is this important? Several reasons. One, having a fiber network enhances safety. I think you heard Deputy Director of Public Safety indicate that they were going to be deploying more cameras. Well, they're connected to our fiber network. That's how they get back to the Command and Control Center. You also look at we improve city services through our fiber network. We're trying to build a mobile workforce. Fiber is one of the tenants of that workforce. In addition to that, we're saving money because right now we're paying recurrent costs to connect to other networks such as AT&amp;T. Those will be eliminated. Disaster recovery will be enhanced. As all of you know, most of the brains of our organization is through our data center. If that goes down, we're in big trouble. Through our fiber network, if a data center goes down, we have another one that begins operation immediately. That's really important. It enhances economic development. Most of the companies in today's world are passing massive amounts of data back and forth, and they want that to be done as quickly as possible. They're actually looking for areas now where they can find high-speed broadband. Fiber enables that. In addition to that, we look at having an impact on digital inclusion. That's been a big topic over the past several years. We believe that with our fiber network, we're deploying it to our REG centers. We're having discussions with some other entities on how we can address that to improve, obviously, quality of life for our residents. Fiber is the backbone for that as well. And then, I know close and dear to Councilmember Miller's heart, is a Wi-Fi project that we'll be discussing. I'm going to steal this thunder. I'll let him talk about that. But fiber obviously plays a role in that as well. And then last, but not least, one of the reasons why we were named one of the top seven intelligent communities in the world is because of our network. And so, that's a very big accomplishment. We're the only one in the only city in the nation to be included in that group. So if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer those. But that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Cabin. Are there any questions? No. And I'll wrap up. After everyone's finished, I do have comments to say about each of your areas. I don't want you to think that she is...Does she have any comments? I certainly do for each of your areas. So I don't want you to think...I was moving it through right now. So the next speaker will be...Our utilities director, Director Greg Davies.
Chair Tyson, members of council, thank you for the opportunity to share the public utilities 2013 capital budget. As you are aware, nearly all the capital dollars spent in public utilities are funded by our ratepayers and are used to support our water, wastewater, stormwater, and electricity infrastructure. The total CIB for 2013 is roughly $340 million. Key projects include corrosion prevention in each of our wastewater treatment plants, capacity and treatment enhancements at our three water plants, and over $20 million in waterline rehabilitation and repair projects. Of the $340 million budgeted, $2.4 million comes from the general fund and is SIT-supported. The Department greatly appreciates City Council's financial support of the Division of Power the last two years. With the dollars we received last year and are proposed to receive this year, we will be making improvements to our Dublin Avenue Control Building and replacing a large transformer that supports all of our downtown customers, including City Hall and the Dublin Road Water Plant. We pride ourselves on our reliability, and these dollars will allow us to shore up our infrastructure, leading to future growth and predictability. Additionally, we are designing numerous neighborhood street lighting projects, and will be constructing the Broad Meadow Street Lighting Project this year. We are also upgrading our street lighting circuits, which will allow for additional streetlight attachments moving forward. Thanks to the support of City Council, the Division of Power is investing in its infrastructure, which will allow us to add new customers and ensure that our 100-year-old mission of lighting the city's streets continues. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight, and will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Director Davies. Any questions for him? Our last speaker this evening would be Director...Dr. Teresa Long from our Health Department. Good evening, Doctor.
Good evening, Council Chair Tyson and members of council. I'm pleased to be here to join with my colleagues to talk about the capital budget, in this case, that is for the Columbus Public Health Department, but actually is located...all of our projects this year are located within the budget of the Finance and Management Department. There are four projects that we are looking forward to hopefully your support on. They include at our facility, at 240 Parsons Avenue, its work with respect to our front porch, with respect to our roof, also our sidewalk repair on 240 Parsons itself, which is desperately in need of repair, so people can be safe, as well as healthy, as they walk to our building, and then finally, our lobby. So again, there is a total of $1.2 million allocated in the Finance and Management projects on behalf of Columbus Public Health and the work to be done at 240 Parsons Avenue. I understand if you have any questions, ask it to Director Rakoski, but my understanding is that Finance and Management and their colleagues think that this is sufficient to complete these important projects. And that's really it.
Thank you, Dr. Long. I just wanted to wait until everyone was finished, because, one, I really do appreciate each and every one of you. And as you...each of you gave your comments on some of the major initiatives that are going on in our city. And listening to these initiatives, and I'm going to kind of go over some in just a few seconds, I am so proud to be living in Columbus, Ohio. I happen to meet with a lot of individuals, a lot of councilmembers and mayors from across the country at the National League of Cities. And I can tell you this, they are not making the investments in their cities like we are. We are so fortunate to be able to have residents that have passed legislation for us to be able to have these funds. It is really a blessing to be able to be focusing on economic development and being able to take 25 cents out of every dollar to be able to support moving our city forward. This is not happening everywhere. And so, as we sit here and we're listening, I know that sometimes it seems like, oh, we got to go through this. It's, you know, what is this about? Well, I'll tell you something. We are fortunate to have the dollars. If we didn't, we would be sitting here, like we've had in the past. We've had some very lean years where we weren't able to do the work for our residents. And so, I am pleased and happy that we have these dollars, and these initiatives are so important to our community. And so, thinking about them as I go through the list, I mean, just thinking about the infrastructure, to be able to put $32 million into the resurfacing of our roads, where remember a couple of years back, we didn't really have any dollars to be able to repair our roads. So the $32 million to enhance the roads, and thinking about our bridges, just that is key. To think about the lighting, remember Director Davies, we didn't have a lot of money. People were coming to us and asking for us to be able to...they wanted their communities to have more streetlights, and we didn't have the dollars to do that. And certainly based upon the work that...I mean, your creative ideas and how to be able to move this forward, and how our residents have supported us, we'll be able to move to have some streetlights. Obviously, we talked about how important it is to have water. We take it for granted that, you know, that our water is going to be clean, we can drink it, but there's a lot of infrastructure work that has to go into making that happen. And I appreciate your work in doing that. As we go through talking about our safety forces, we want to provide...and safety's a number-one concern of the residents in our city. That's the number-one concern. And to be able to make sure that we can support a crime lab, so that if a crime does happen in our neighborhoods, that we have a lab that can look at that and all that evidence, and we can be able to...if the individual who has done this crime will be able to put the right individual, and the right individual will have to pay for whatever they've done within our community. Having cameras in our community certainly gives us another eye to help our safety forces, to be able to make sure that when individuals are out here being involved in crime, that we have a way to identify those individuals and help our city feel a lot more safe. We need to make sure that we have, you know, our fire stations. We hadn't had the money to invest in the infrastructure to have a new fire station. It's important. We want our firefighters and to renovate those stations. We want our firefighters to have the absolute best facilities to be able to...they reside in those buildings. We want to make sure they have the proper places to be able to live and work, because that's what they do there. And we want to make sure they have top-notch facilities to be able to do that, so we can retain the very best firefighters for our city. We also want to make sure we're providing those same kinds of renovations for our police officers. These two groups of people keep our city safe. So we want to make sure we're doing that, to upgrade all of our systems, to give them the equipment that they need to be able to serve our residents. The recreation parks area, the investments in our facilities, I mean, they improve our quality of life. We ask individuals about moving to Columbus and retaining...moving here and keeping individuals wanting to stay and live in our community. You know, they say it's about the quality of life in our city. And the quality of life, those recreational facilities are important. So individuals who, whether they have money or don't have money, have an opportunity to come into these facilities. I was at...we were all out at Barnett last night, and it was so nice to be able to have air conditioning in that facility. And it was a lively place last night. A lot of activities going on in there. And we want to make sure that people can come in there if they have illnesses, to be cool and come and be able to exercise. So thank you, Director McKnight, and thank you for presenting that tonight. All the improvements are going to be made. Maryland Pool, that's a pool that I went to and knew how old I am. The pools...I went to that pool and learned how to swim there. I mean, I'm sure Councilmember Miller remembers close to his, where he grew up too. And to be able to see the renovations that's going to happen in that neighborhood, that's a blessing. I mean, gosh, that thing's...hadn't had a renovation, and I mean, it must have been over 50...I mean, it's over 50 years old. And so, we were just not able to put the dollars into doing that. And so, I'm excited about that. I'm excited about the greenways and the trails, because that, again, is the quality of life for people to be in our community. Excited that we're going to be able to, in that funding, support the Franklin Park Conservatory and the museum and a number of arts institutions that also enhance our quality of life. Development, excited about American Edition. Excited about the dollars that are put in here for the vacant and abandoned housing. Excited about the ways that we're going to help businesses move forward. I'm excited about the budget. I know you guys saying we know all this, but I mean, because I know other places aren't doing this work. You know, when Director Cabin was saying, you know, we're now, you know, I think the seventh in the top seven are intelligent cities, and how fiber is so important, and so Dura and Councilmember Miller is always talking about technology and the importance that it plays in our community. This budget, you know, has it all in it to move our city forward. So healthcare, the arts, it's just a great budget. And so, I thank you for it. And I don't want us to take it for granted. I know we sometimes sit there like, let's go through this. Well, we should all be smiling about this budget, because, like I said, a few years ago, we weren't smiling. And so, as long as we keep taking care of our facilities, we'll continue to keep our AAA bond ready, because we have it just like a house. If you don't invest in your property, eventually, it goes to pot, as we use that word that we use, and consequently, then we'll have issues and problems. So thank you for the presentations this evening. I am excited about it and look forward to hopefully the passage of this budget on April the 1st, and get this work out in the community, and get people working, and people will have jobs. So with that, I am Councilmember Craig.
Thank you very much, Chairman...Chairwoman Tyson. In many ways, I really will be only restating the obvious, but I certainly want it. I think there were several points that you talked about are worth reemphasizing. I certainly want to thank you for your leadership in helping shepherd through the capital bill, and certainly the administration. I know how hard that directors work and staff for the City of Columbus. Recently, we had our Employee Recognition Day, and there you clearly see, many of those folks have dedicated 20 and 40 years of their lives to the work of our city. And so, we're deeply appreciated for the work that they do every single day, whether it's our snow warriors, those that are coming in to maintain our buildings, those in working with Dr. Long and our health facilities, and all of those that we work with in human and our health facilities, and all of those that we work with in Human Services. Certainly, Director Cavan is helping us lead the way in a national, from a national, international perspective in the work that we're doing. But all of this is being done, you know, because of our due diligence, our fiscal restraint, yet we're meeting the needs, the critical needs of the people that we serve every day, and that really is the timely investment in our future, it's simply that. And I think you're so right, I think because of the commitment of our residents and our citizens to allow us to do this work, it cannot, never be overstated, has allowed us to be in this position today, and we're going to do our best to continue to manage the resources in a way that is efficient and effective, and keeps our word to the citizens that we're going to do the work in a helpful way. So, I did want to defer my comments until we had heard them all, and it is exciting, and it is powerful, and we have more work to do. And I needed to mention, I want to thank you all, so I know that is being proposed, the work for our veterans and to continue the work that we're doing there. We've already identified eight or nine houses that we've been able to retrofit, to do some renovations, to support the quality of life for our veterans in some grants that will help them stay in their homes and maintain their homes. So we've got a lot more work to do, but I am excited and I appreciate all that the administration and council is doing with regard to our capital budget.
Thank you, Councilmember Craig. Councilmember Paley.
I think we've all thanked everybody in City Hall and all our directors and our employees, and I just would like to thank all the people that have come to City Council and talked to us about their needs, and I know there's a lot of people here today to speak that have come forward and asked for help for their organizations, and we have had business roundtables, and we've had public service issues that we've sat down and asked for input from the community, and I guess, I'm hoping that everybody can see that we are listening and that we understand what your needs are because you tell us, and I encourage that you continue to do that, and that we encourage, and we continue to listen and try to provide that help. So, I want to help, I want to thank the citizens of Columbus for helping us understand what they, how they want their city to progress, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. And so with that, we're going to start with the, our public comment of the hearing, and certainly, we're always open to continue to hear information that could be provided to us as we continue to move forward with this budget process. The names of the speakers are in order as they have submitted their speaker slip, and so with that, I'm going to, each person has three minutes to speak, and this is being taped by CTV, and the first speaker is Nanette Macy-Junes. Come up, state your name and who you represent.
Good evening, Council Chair Tyson and council members. I'm Nanette Macy-Junes from the Columbus Museum of Art, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to update you on the museum's capital plan and our request to the city. Before I do that, I want to say, sitting here as a guest this evening, sitting in these council chambers and hearing that capital budget, and the aspirations of that capital budget, and the commitment of everyone in this room to this city, and the quality of its life and its future for its citizen, it's very awe-inspiring. I mean, it's really kind of gives you chills. I don't think I'd ever heard it in such detail, and you realize what we try to do every year. But back to the museum, we are in the third and final phase of a campaign that has included both a capital and programmatic enhancements, all designed to ensure that this 134-year-old community resource will continue to serve all of its citizens today and well into its future. This campaign is necessary to respond to the community's ever-changing needs. It is a once-in-a-generation opportunity that will create and renovate and expand a facility, support new programming that nurtures innovation, creativity, and critical thinking skills, and build financial sustainability. Creativity is one of our core values, and we believe in innovative, lifelong learning, and strategic partnerships are key to the future success of our citizens. That is why, in the second phase of the campaign, we created the Center for Creativity, which is a physical space, a philosophy, and a programming stream. The Center of Creativity serves learners of all ages, including every fifth grader in the Columbus City Schools, and through a year-long program as well as all the second year medical students at the Ohio State University College of Medicine, and even an Alzheimer's program that works with patients and caregivers. Last June, we opened the West Garden, supported by a generous grant from the city and the Department of Recreations and Parks. This is not only a new public green space for our city, but provides a safe and efficient entry for all the school groups coming to the museum and for all those with mobility challenges. It has already become a beloved spot at the museum, we've already had a young woman who works at the motorist building across the way call and ask to be married, it was a tiny little wedding, and she was, within the first month of the garden being opened, we had a wedding there. So we thank you for that investment that you made in us. We are asking the city to continue their partnership through their support of utility and site work necessary for the final phase of construction. We anticipate construction to begin in July of this year for this phase, and it will include expanded public sculpture garden and a renovated and expanded meeting space, special event space, and expanded galleries space for the permanent collection and for traveling exhibitions, like the Picasso show that we plan for our grand reopening in the fall of 2015. I just signed the contract for that, so I'm very excited. The new event space will allow us to grow an important revenue stream, special events, meetings, and weddings. And the additional gallery space, the first time that we have added gallery space since 1931. Again, the city dollars will only go to support city site preparation and utility work. We thank you, we want to become a 21st century museum and be a leader in our field, and thank you.
Thank you, Nanette. Thank you for coming down this evening, we truly appreciate you and the work you do with the museum, to help our community. I particularly enjoyed the part about the young people, the fifth graders come there from our Columbus Public School System, so thank you so much.
And now those preschoolers, we even get those preschoolers in.
Thank you, thank you. All right, Demetrius Neely.
Thank you, Chairwoman Tyson and the rest of the City Council. I come tonight to advocate for funds for capital improvement for the King Arts Complex. We are an aging building, like many of the speakers spoke before, and I want to echo the words of Nanette. I am impressed that we work in, that we live in a city where we can work and play safely, that you invest in the arts, and that we invest in our safety and our technology, so that's very impressive, and I agree with Councilwoman Tyson that that's, it makes me feel good to live here. The King Arts Complex, an aging building, probably close to 100 years old, and it needs a lot of repair. I have submitted to each of you via your assistant's email, some of the things that we need repairs on, but we're asking for about a $300,000 investment in things like, things that go to safety, things that go to ADA compliance, all of our public restrooms need to be ADA compliant, and today they are not. We need more safety in terms of our cameras, when people enter our building, we are not able to necessarily tell who it is, and that goes to patron safety, that goes to child safety, and that goes to staff safety. We have things like, I heard someone speak earlier about the HVAC systems in the city buildings, and again, the King Arts Complex is housed in a city building, we have the same issues, in the summer, you might be 90 degrees warm, in the winter, you're probably going to freeze, you might wear your coat to, in your office every day. So, those are some of the things, I just wanted to highlight a few of them. Energy efficiency is a big issue for us as well, our utility bills are out of the roof, and we believe we need an energy audit or something to help us figure out how to make those bills a little bit, on the city a little bit, and on the taxpayers a little bit less onerous. So those are some of the things I just wanted to highlight, I want to thank you for allowing me to come down and submitting this budget, and hopefully, it will be supported. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Neely, for coming down, truly do appreciate you and the service to our community. Thank you. The next speaker is Ms. Diane Nance. Oh, I'm sorry, Jennifer Flynn, I'm sorry, Jennifer.
Good evening. Thank you, Chair Tyson and City Council members, Jennifer Flynn, and I am with the Franklinton Area Commission and the Mayor's Advisory Board on Disability Issues, and we are desperately asking for funding for curb cuts, sidewalk repairs, especially under bridges and overpasses. They're very, very dangerous, many individuals in the city with mobility issues are using the streets for transportation with not correct lighting, it is very dangerous and it's a hazard. So we're desperately asking for more wheelchair cuts, and I know in the past, we've made great advancements, but we still have a lot more that needs done. I have a message from Trent Smith, he's the Franklinton Board of Trade, he was unable to attend our meeting, and he's asking for support and initiatives for the businesses in Franklinton. With all the money that the mayor is wanting to invest in East Franklinton, we are concerned that ADA issues are not being addressed, so we would like that some special attention there as that development is taking place, so we desperately appreciate anything you could do for the City of Columbus. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flynn, again for coming down and sharing the concerns, we certainly do, all the councils certainly care about any individual that has any disabilities that prevent them from being able to move around the city like everyone else. So, thank you for coming down and sharing that, there is a commitment, I'm sure, to continue the work that we've been doing, and certainly the director of that area is listening to this, hearing your concerns, and we will be working with you. And I think, I know that Councilmember Paley has some comments that she would like to make. Thank you.
It's always a pleasure to have you in City Council. I know that Nancy has made an appointment for you to come down and talk to us, and we're going to make a more concerted effort to come to some more of your meetings, but as I said before, and I'll say again, your organization needs to be very proud of where you've gone so far with this city. My determination with ADA ramps is because of you and your organization. Also, I don't know if you've noticed, but we have lowered the parking meters so that people in wheelchairs can, the handicap parking meters are now at their height, that also comes out of your organization. So, I am listening, we are going to work on it, and we do care, so thank you for coming down and advocating for your group.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ms. Diane Nance.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Committee Chair Tyson and council members. On behalf of the seven Columbus Art Commission members, I'm Diane Nance, by the way, I want to thank you for your advocacy and recognition of the importance of public art in Columbus through your supportive projects, an assessment of the city's collection, and a multi-year maintenance and conservation plan. Because of your investment, we engaged Robert Lodge of McKay Lodge, a highly reputable conservation firm in Oberlin, who assessed the city's outdoor collection and gave us detailed prioritized framework for maintaining and conserving the city's outdoor art collection. He has written and will give further instructions about creating and training a volunteer corps to manage basic maintenance, a plan that empowers residents to engage in the look of their own neighborhoods, and teaches artists about the care of materials. The Greater Columbus Arts Council has offered to work with us to present a maintenance workshop in the future. This investment enables us to fulfill our duties in accordance with Columbus City Code, Chapter 3115. Because of your investment, the CAC's first city-funded public art project, Lawrence Argent's Flowing Kiss, will be installed late summer in North Bank Park. The artist selection for a design team to work with MKSK on the East Franklinton Town Rich Gateways is in progress, and 2011 CIB funds will pay for public art bike racks in 2013. Because you supported the importance of a vibrant, attractively designed and functional city, and the mayor endorsed us as representative of the city, we secured significant seed funding from the Ohio State University and a major art town grant from the National Endowment for the Arts, with additional funding from county, state, corporate, and individual sources, and the Columbus Foundation, the temporary project Columbus Public Art 2012 Finding Time opened at the stroke of midnight, January 1st, 2012. Temporary art placements allow cities to pilot different types of art and to bring awareness to spaces that we may walk by every day but have long forgotten their usefulness. As part of Finding Time, the Columbus Museum of Art hosted a forum last November where we heard high praise for our city, and from the chief public art administrators from Kansas City, Portland, Cleveland, and the NEA's Design Director. Public art activity helps Columbus to align with the cultural vision of major civic and arts organization in Columbus. With your continued inclusion of public art in the CIB, we will follow the McKay Lodge Plan for Maintenance and Conservation. In addition, we are committed to identifying projects within administrative departments and in partnership with neighborhood organizations. Advanced planning is a critical part of ensuring that public art projects are appropriately chosen and administered. Help us make Columbus a smart and open place to live and work, and we thank you very much for your support.
Thank you, Ms. Nance, for your work, I know the committee is, the Public Art Commission is certainly a volunteer organization, and just appreciate your work, and want to continue to work with you. Public art is also, is very important, a quality of life, as you mentioned in your presentation, and look forward to working with you and us having a public art program.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Mr. Bill Maiden. Good evening, Ben Maiden.
I answer to anything. Chair Tyson, members of council, it's a pleasure to be with you this evening. I represent the board and team of Wonderland Columbus, and like to speak to you briefly about the answer to three key questions to support your deliberations on our capital request. Those questions are, what is Wonderland Columbus? Why is it worthy of investment on the part of community stakeholders, and what anticipated benefits might you look forward to with implementation? Wonderland Columbus is a 501(c)(3) under the IRS code. We have as a mission a desire to secure a venue and to create an operating environment where young creatives, including visual artists, performing artists, entrepreneurs, I said young, I would include the young at heart as well, as you might expect with my gray hair here, but basically, what we're looking to do is to create an operating environment where there can be enormous synergy between young creatives across the board in our city. We think it's very important to do that for the following kinds of reasons. As you know, we have identified a target property in East Franklinton. We believe that we occupy a rather unique niche between the rough industrial and the highly mature arts institution in our city, an important transitional role for young creatives. In addition to that, being a collaborator in spirit with organizations like 400 West Rich, like the Idea Foundry, like COSI, like the Franklinton Development Association, we believe we can be another important element in the equation to improve the pace of the redevelopment of East Franklinton into the vision that we share for a dynamic arts neighborhood. In addition to that, with success there, we will be able to attract and retain more of the young creative population that tends to graduate from our colleges and universities in town. Why is that important? That's important because a lot of these folks are interested in creating businesses, and those businesses become generators of jobs, which in turn, of course, animate our city, bring young folks to the Franklinton area who want to live there and work in that environment. It's very important from that point of view. We appreciate the fact that we've had consideration, we stand we've had consideration. We stand ready to answer any questions that you may have going forward, and we believe that this project, when successfully implemented, will be able to be a very material contributor to the vision that we have for our fair city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ben. Appreciate you coming down and sharing the vision of Wonderland. Any questions? Ben?
Not any questions, just a comment. I have seen the plan, and I only wish that I wasn't so set in my ways so that when Wonderland, if Wonderland becomes part of our city, I could have been there. It's a very, very exciting place for our city, and I think you would be a great addition to it. Good luck to you and your team, and I hope that we will be at that ribbon cutting when Wonderland opens.
Thank you for those comments, Chair Councilmember Paley, and certainly, Ben, as you just mentioned. I mean, there are some incredible young, creative people in our community. And if you're not kind of in their lane or know where they're at, you can kind of miss what's going on. But once you get kind of pulled into it or kind of get involved in it, I mean, it is absolutely amazing. And so we have to support organizations like this. There's a lot of others out here, but we have to support them because this is the future of Columbus, and we've got to continue to figure out how to attract and retain or keep our young people here in these businesses as we're working with small businesses. But it's exciting to see how creative that they are. And so, thanks for coming down, Ben, and appreciate you. Mr. Bruce Harkey, Franklin Park Conservatory.
Good evening, Council Chair Tyson and members of council. I'm here to thank you for the long partnership the city has had with Franklin Park Conservatory and Botanical Gardens. And it's been a pretty amazing journey over the last five years. I was telling Councilmember Tyson recently when we were visiting in her office that I'm from Detroit, and I spent 17 years there before going to college. And I've been in Columbus now for 20 years. I didn't plan on staying in Columbus, but like so many people, you come here and you get hooked. I often describe it as the Hotel California. You can check in, but you can never leave. But it's an amazing place, and I think, like so many people, the reason I stayed here is because of the tremendous quality of life. And that is something that Franklin Park Conservatory holds very dear. Our mission is to enhance the quality of life and connect the community through educational, cultural, and social experiences. And the city's commitment to Franklin Park Conservatory has been tremendous. We've worked in partnership with Director McKnight and Councilmember Klein and many council members in the administration to really move forward on Phase One of the Master Plan, which was dedicated in 2011. We appreciate the continued support to meet the city's commitment to Phase One of the capital campaign, and that has allowed the conservatory to grow its earned revenue from 49% to 63%. That isn't our true objective, though. Our true objective is to try to create a sustainable, mission-driven organization that is really a paradigm for what it means to contribute to the quality of life of a community. And that success has allowed the conservatory to expand its important mission-based programs, including community gardening. We've helped to start over 300 community gardens in the city to bring provocative new art exhibitions to the conservatory and innovative new educational programs. We all know that education is tremendously important for the citizens of this community. We aren't stopping there, though. We are continuing our work, and we're looking forward to Master Plan 2.0, working with Director McKnight and community leaders to articulate a vision for what Franklin Park Conservatory can mean as an important cultural and educational asset on the Near East Side, especially with the PACT initiative. I think we all recognize how these anchor institutions really help drive the development, tourism, and economic development of the community. So thank you for your support, and we appreciate all you're doing for our community because it really is very different than where I came from, and I'm very happy to be here in Columbus.
Thank you so much for coming down, Bruce, and just appreciate the gym that we have right here in Central City as the Franklin Park Conservatory and Botanical Gardens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Paley.
I say this over and over again, and I just don't think people, or I know a lot of people do, but Franklin Park Conservatory, to me, is like a fantasy world. It's not just about plants and learning something. It's somewhere to go, and the art is fabulous. Everything in it is fabulous. And I'm just saying this so that if anybody's watching, they'll go. Because everything you've done in the last couple of years or since I've been involved and really been a member of the conservatory, which has only really been recently, it's a really good investment for the city. And in sustainability also, because the community gardens are just fabulous, and so many of our communities are really meeting each other and coming together behind them. And thank you for everything you do.
Thank you. I just would add, the Community Garden Campus, if people haven't seen that, in the southeast corner of the park, it's the largest public edible garden in North America, and I think that's something that we should be very proud of. It's on city property, and I would encourage everyone to come and see that. I think it's a tremendous asset for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker this evening is Mr. Al Edmondson. Good evening, Mr. Edmondson.
Chair Tyson and members of council, good evening. I just wanted to come down here to express my sincere gratitude and appreciation for your commitment in helping make the Near East Side a great place to live, work, and worship. Also, I want to say thank you to Director Knight also for the renovation of Maryland Pool. You're, you know, I'm so excited about this thing. I get choked up at times, but this is the first step in making our neighborhood a better place, and it would help with the quality of life for our young people, getting them out, swimming, exercising. Also, it will provide a safe haven for some of our youth that are in the neighborhood. It gives them something else to do other than hanging on the corners. The Mount Vernon Association is glad to serve as a catalyst and an improvement of the Near East Side. We're working alongside with PACT, and we're looking forward for the great things that we're in partnership in doing there. We're working with the other institutions in the neighborhood to help make our neighborhood a better place for our residents. And also, even though there are a small group of people that have their own differences, we are moving forward in a positive direction to make our community a great place for our young people and our seniors.
Thank you, Mr. Edmondson, for a number of things. Thank you for coming down testifying, but also for your work. We know that you are certainly a community leader in the Mount Vernon area, the District of Urban Association. You have been so, you've been a leader in being very creative and making sure that, helping young people, like the backpacks, the school supplies, looking out for our young people in that community, being such an advocate for our seniors. We truly, truly do appreciate your support. Columbus is a city built up of neighborhoods and neighborhood leaders who help make this community successful. So it is, you know, this is a neighborhood budget. It's a neighborhood. It's the business. It's for helping businesses to move forward. We know that you have been a small business owner on the Mount Vernon area for, I know, over 30 years.
Twenty.
Well, I'm cutting my son's hair. He's 30. So for a long time, I guess I give 20-some years. You don't want to be that old yet, I guess. But anyway, I just want to say, you know, really thank you for the work that you're doing in your community. It's greatly appreciated, and you're a part of what makes Columbus great. So thank you so much.
Thank you. I want to say one more thing, is that we just found out yesterday we got an increase because, you know, with the NCR, it allows us to do more, too. So I just want to say thank you for that as well, for allowing us to do a little bit more to help improve our neighborhood businesses, to make them stronger, because we've got a lot of great things coming up this year, and we're really excited about, it's going to look different, and best is yet to come.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your service. Mr. Edmondson was our final speaker. And so again, I want to thank again all the speakers for coming down and sharing their thoughts regarding this budget. I want to give a special thank you to all the directors and staff that are sitting here this evening, as well as some that could not be here this evening. You are, we truly do appreciate you. We enjoy working with you. It's been a great partnership moving our city forward. So thank you so much. A special thank you to Director Paul Rakowski and his team of people. Just really want to give to Rob and to Kyle and his whole team, thank you, because this is, I mean, we go from the, you work on the budget all year long. And here we are now. We're at, you know, we finished the general budget with the capital budget, and we have more budgets to come. And so I just want to say a special thank you to your team, and just really appreciate each and every one of you. And again, I want to thank each of my council members for the work that they do to support our residents every day. Thank you, Councilmember Craig, Miller, Paley, for being here this evening. And I want to thank a number of people who helped work on the council side on the budget, Kate McSweeney-Pashati, Brian Clark, Carl Williams, Kevin Kilbane, and of course, CTV. We would not be able to have this hearing without Columbus TV Network. So thank you. And I want to thank Council President Genth who couldn't be here, Councilmember Mills, as well as Councilman McLean, and also Mr. Auditor Dorian and his team. And finally, to the residents, it's really thank you for allowing us to do this work for you each and every day. We hope to be able, we want to continue to have feedback on this budget, but our goal is by April 1, the April 1 hearing, council meeting to pass this budget and move all these initiatives forward. Thank you, and have a safe trip home. Good evening.